Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regular city council meeting at the Richfield Municipal Center, March 27th, 7:00 PM. I see no one here for the open forum, so if you'd all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I would look for approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of March 13th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. And at this time, we welcome to our chambers the Hennepin County Sheriff, Richard W. Stanek, who, to make sure he got here in time, hustled the Vice President out of town so he wouldn't be late. And I thank you for those considerations.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you very much for having me out here tonight. With me is Sergeant Cal McDaniel. Cal is the good-looking guy in the back of the room here. He works on our community engagement team, so he works countywide with the different diaspora community and does a great job for us. Samantha Kleinfeld works in our intergovernmental relations, works with the local level, state level, congressional level. And of course, you know Commissioner Gattell, and hopefully you should get a chance to say a few words we love having around the county board in supporting our efforts, public safety countywide. Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, let's see if I can get this to -- I already goofed. So which one do you think it is? Arrow to the right? Oh, up-down? No. Uh-oh. No, I did it. Nope. Oh, unclick? Oh, that's fine.
And then just press up-down.
Up-down. Well, then just go up. Okay, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm sorry about that little technical difficulties. I've got about eight to 10 minutes. And then, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, I'm happy to take any questions you might have or not. I gotta tell you that as the elected sheriff of Hennepin County, I absolutely enjoy working with the men and women out here in Richfield. Chief Hentorn and the folks out here do a great job. And I get a chance to meet with Jay on occasion for a cup of coffee at my favorite caribou. We talk about things that are important to the residents of Richfield and the surrounding communities and how we can best support the efforts of public safety out here. Oh, now I gotta key down? No, that's why. I was going the wrong way. I'm sorry. Okay, so I told you we're gonna talk a little bit about the sheriff's office and what we do countywide, working with local law enforcement, a little bit about our roles and responsibility in conjunction with the Richfield Police, and then talk about our eight lines of business and how that fits in. And of course, three things that are really important to me. One is our forensic science crime lab, the opioid crisis, and the reduction of violent crime countywide, that how it affects your resident. My background is real simple. I've been a police officer now for 34 years. I'm a Minneapolis police officer on leave to serve as the elected sheriff of the county. This is my 12th year serving as sheriff. I love public safety, so it's an easy job to get up 2:00 in the morning, go to work on behalf of the residents of our county. Hennepin County's a fairly big place, about 1.3 million residents or so. You can see 500-plus square miles, 104 lakes, three major rivers. I will not ask you, Mr. Mayor, what are the names of the three rivers that flow through Hennepin County, but I know you know the Crow, the Mississippi. And what's the last one? Oh, the Mississippi. Oh, I got that one.
You said that twice.
The Crow, the Mississippi.
Minnesota.
And Minnesota. Hence, the Three Rivers Park District. And you've got 104 lakes, you've got 200-plus 80 miles of waterway. And the big thing, though, is there are 45 cities, like the city of Richfield. Everyone's unique in terms of how they provide public safety services to their residents. Your city is no different, which is why we enjoy that great working relationship. And then we've got 36 local police departments spread out across those 45 counties. Some of them work together, and many of them or all of them work in terms of mutual aid. So if there's an incident here in Richfield, a large incident, you'll see a response, of course, from Bloomington, Eden Prairie, maybe the airport police, the sheriff's office, as well as your local police department and first responders. My sheriff's office is structured the same way as your local police department. We run our day-to-day operations with our chief deputy, which is akin to the chief of police, and then I have four majors that oversee eight divisions. Those eight divisions are commanded by eight captains, and each of those captains run one of our lines of business. Seven of the eight lines of business are articulated in state law. The eighth one is not, and that is the Hennepin County Sheriff's Crime Lab. Only through the good fortune and funding support by the Hennepin County Board do we provide those services to 44 out of the 45 cities countywide, and we can talk about that a little bit later. The state statute, people ask me all the time, well, Sheriff, would he derive your authority or authorize an environment? It's truly from the residents of the county, residents of Richfield, as well as residents of Brooklyn Center, Brooklyn Park, and Minneapolis, and countywide. Under Chapter 387, it talks about the powers and duties of the elected sheriff of the county working in tandem with local law enforcement to provide a seamless realm of public safety services. Our eight lines of business are pretty simple, and under each one of these, I wrote down or Sam wrote down a little bit about how that service level affects the city of Richfield. Our jail last year booked 33,000 people through the front doors, which is down dramatically from 2007, where we had about 40,000 bookings. You could see last year in the city of Richfield, 720 bookings into the Hennepin County jail. Court security, we provide security at eight different courthouses countywide. Southdale, which is closest to you, and hopefully it'll stay for a while, Brookdale, Ridgedale, downtown at the Hennepin County Government Center, two towers, 24 floors each, Juvenile Center, Family Justice Center, essentially about 90 courtrooms, 75 judges that provide services in the 4th Judicial District. Our patrol, Sergeant Cal McDaniel, as you see him in uniform. The sheriff's deputies have jurisdiction countywide, so in all 45 cities, Cal has the same law enforcement authority as the local police officer in that jurisdiction. You can see the number of patrol hours in Richfield, as well as in Q4. Our warrants and civil process are both mandated by state law as well, something the sheriff has to provide to the residents of the county. We serve about 30,000 warrants countywide every year. Our civil process, about the same. Investigations, we provide some level of investigations, depending on what the city can provide to themselves. We will not supplant local law enforcement, but we will supplement local law enforcement. So if you think about the eight lines of business, that is a full-service law enforcement agency in this country. And usually what happens is the sheriff's office provides the backdrop of law enforcement for the agencies in the county or the city. If the city, like yours, has a local police department, you choose what level of service you want to provide, a kind of value-added or addition to what the sheriff's office provides for your residents, and in which you don't provide, we will provide those lines of business as the primary service level, or in this case, with the three lines of business you do provide, answering 911 calls through, I think your dispatch is in Edina, and then, you know, responding out to 911 calls, and some level of investigation. That's handled by the city of Richfield primarily, and we defer the local autonomy for Chief Hentorn and the men and women out here to answer those calls for service. And then our crime lab, we're gonna talk about that in a second here. Actually, we'll talk about it right now. Right now, yesterday, today, tomorrow, we are undergoing our re-accreditation process. We undergo that accreditation process every three years. It's really important to us. Our forensic scientists, there are about 40 of them, along with our CSIs, our crime scene investigators, work in tandem. If you have a crime out here that requires lab services, local law enforcement will contact the other CSIs, they'll come out to help process the scene. They will inventory the evidence down at the crime lab. The forensic scientists will process that evidence, and then they will appear in court sometime later to testify to the evidence as needed by the prosecution or the defense. And I talked to you for a minute, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, about the opioid crisis. I noted that Ms. Gonzalez works for healthcare, and, you know, there are a lot of folks out there that do a lot of different things. This is one area where our county has really -- it's hit us really hard. I mean, there's no easy way to say it. The last year, we had 162 opioid-related deaths. The year before that, 153. The year before that, 110. Just in the last two years, a 47% increase in opioid-related overdose deaths countywide. Our county's not any different than the other six metro counties or the other 80 counties across Minnesota, or what's happening across the country. But I know two things for sure. One, every single one of these are preventable. Every single one of them are tragic, and we gotta figure out a way to do it. We always say that, you know, local law enforcement are first responders. We provide enforcement, intervention, prevention. We're not so good on the last two. We're really good on the first one, which is enforcement. But we rely on our second responders to help us out, educators, the faith community, local elected officials, business, healthcare. And we all have a stake in this in order to do what's right on behalf of our community. Our opioid overdose deaths run about two-and-a-half times our homicide rate countywide. So if I had 162 homicides in Hennepin County last year, I'd bet that it'd be on the front page of the Star Tribune or on the 4, 5, 9, 10, 11, all news channels in between, but it's not. And I don't know why that is. I have these conversations all the time with the local media, as well as local elected officials. I do not think we should just give in and say, hey, that's okay. 162 people dying in my county last year, a 16-year-old girl, and a 98-year-old man, in all cities in between, I think is extremely tragic, and we can do better. Having said that, I'm also aware that your firefighters out here carry Narcan, naloxone, and that is a very good thing. And just a couple of weeks ago, I had a chance to recognize six local police departments who carry Narcan, naloxone. Between them, they had over 50 saves. That's 50 times they administered Narcan, naloxone, and brought somebody back to life, gave them a chance to go home to their families, live to fight another day, and beat that addiction issue, which is a good thing. All right, I'll get off my bully pulpit with opioids, but I wanted you to know how I felt about it. We, like I said, we're not very good on the enforcement aspect. Oh, we're really good on the enforcement, not so good on prevention intervention. But the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office and working with the county board and our county partners have hashtagged "no overdose," which is our prevention intervention piece. We work with the professional sports teams in town. You'll see billboards across. We do town hall meetings with our 45 cities and 22 school districts. We try and try and try, but still those numbers are creeping up on us. I do not suspect that 2018 will be any lower than 162 deaths, unfortunately. Now, the other part the sheriff's office does is reduction of violent crime, guns, gangs, kids, and drugs. Every time I go out to a crime scene, every single one of them, a violent crime, rape, robbery, murder, aggravated assault, I'll see one, two, three, or all four of these present. And I've been doing this a long time. For 20 years, I worked in Minneapolis. I ran their criminal investigations, homicide, robbery, the task forces. And now as the county sheriff, I see the same thing, guns, gangs, kids, and drugs. Over the last 11 years, we've reduced violent crime in this county 25 to 26%. That's 25 to 26% less in terms of rape, robbery, murder, aggravated assault. Could we do better? Sure. But your local police chief, the cities around you, all do a phenomenal job banding together, working on our task forces, doing the right thing on behalf of our resident. And I promised you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, eight to 10 minutes. I took eight minutes and 35 seconds. I'm sorry, Steve. I know what I promised you. I went a little bit over, but I wanted to make it easy and understandable in terms of what it is that we do and why we do what we do on behalf of public safety countywide. Lastly, Mr. Mayor, I will say that as elected officials, I know it, Commissioner Gattell knows it, others who may be watching know this, public safety can't do what we do without the support of their elected officials, and I appreciate the support that you give your police and fire out here in the city of Richfield. Like I said, I get a chance to talk to your fire chief, your police chief. I understand what you do for them, and I greatly appreciate that. Mr. Mayor?
I want to thank you for taking time after what I know was a busy day to come out and bring us up to date on what you're doing down there, and once again, reinforcing the remarkable collegiality and cooperation between the county and the various cities and municipalities. We're all working towards the same goals, and based on the statistics, you're doing a great job at yours, and hopefully we can do as well out here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Comments?
Just to first want to thank you, in particular, for being here and coming out to us and for your passion on the opioid epidemic. I mean, it's clear you have a passion for it, and it's an issue that's not going away. But I did have a couple of questions from community members, our immigrant community. You know, I noticed that in the goals, I don't see any mention of our immigrant community in here, and there's a lot of concern in our community, a lot of fear, in particular about the sheriff's role with ICE. And I just wondered if you'd talk a little bit about your level of coordination with ICE to our community members that have fears and concerns about it.
Sure. That's a great question, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm happy to answer it. You should know that Sergeant Cal McDaniel is one of eight folks who work in our community engagement team. They're out every single day across the community. Carmen Lopez, Jonathan Tran, Vong, Abdi Mohammed, and others. It's what they do every day. In terms of what I think you're specifically asking about is our relationship with ICE as it relates to the jail. I talked about the 33,000 bookings last year. Everybody who gets booked into the Hennepin County Jail gets treated the same. An immigration violation, right, it's not something that local law enforcement does. We don't go out and stop folks. I don't know of any law enforcement agency in this county, the sheriff's office included, that asks for a green card or citizenship at the time of an interaction with law enforcement. If it's a criminal investigation and they get booked in the Hennepin County Jail for some reason, all 33,000 people across the board get treated the same. Their fingerprints, their photo, that's how we positively identify them. The federal government took it out of local sheriff's hands a number of years ago, when every time you're booked into jail and you get your fingerprints and photographs, we submit those to the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension in the state of Minnesota. The state of Minnesota, through the BCA, transfers those fingerprints to the FBI. The FBI positively identifies the individual, and they choose to share it then with the Department of Homeland Security, Immigration, Customs Enforcement. If for some reason, and they don't share their federal privacy records with the local sheriff or local law enforcement, if for some reason Immigration Customs Enforcement has purview or wants to talk with one of the inmates in the jail, they are welcome to do so. And they ask us for a detainer. We do not honor detainees at the Hennepin County Sheriff's Office, and I don't know of any of the other 86 sheriffs in Minnesota that do that either. However, we do cooperate with federal law enforcement, and we share resources, and we will tell them upon release, when someone's going to be released from our custody. But no one is held beyond the time of their local charges being adjudicated. And that's where we've done our business. It's kind of walking that fine line between both sides, residents of the county who want us to do more, residents of the county who want us to do less. We just follow the law. My discretion is very limited with respect to this. There's a lot of mystique out there. But again, I appreciate your question, because you gave me a chance to clear it up with you here tonight.
I guess just one follow-up. You mentioned just following the lie. What do, in terms of at the jail, is there any guidance given to folks about what they have to or can refuse in terms of having a conversation with ICE, for example? Do sheriff deputies tell folks of their rights to not have a conversation if they don't want to?
It's a great question as well. Again, immigration violations are not a criminal violation. They are civil. My deputies do not enforce civil, federal civil law. ICE doesn't have any purview over the local elected sheriff. We make a phone call available to those that ICE wants to speak with in order they can clear up their immigration concerns or issues. In other words, if you think about, let's just take the number 40,000 bookings a year. We know that it affects about 4,000. From 4,000, we widowed down to about 400 that ICE wants to talk to. Now, ICE can either come and hold 400 individuals a year, or we can help facilitate that phone call if they so wish, and from there, they narrow it down to about 40 or less per year that they actually want. And so rather than having 400 visits, or ICE picking up 400 people, transferring them out here to Bloomington to their office and doing something more, we think we're helping them out by narrowing it down to just 40 or so. The 40 they really want to talk to versus inconveniencing the other 400, who they just want to ask some questions about where they're from or place of birth, citizenship. And by the way, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, you didn't ask me, but there are two questions we ask during the booking process. There's a lot of questions we ask, right? We ask you your name, your date of birth. We ask you your height, weight, scars, marks, tattoos. We're required by state law and the Department of Corrections to ask place of birth and country of -- place of birth and then citizenship. If you are a citizen of somewhere other than the United States, you have consulate rights, and we have to notify the consulate that you are in our custody, whether it's Ecuador, Mexico, Poland, Germany. Many of them have consulates or contacts, consellers, available here in Minnesota, and that's why we make those contacts.
Well, thanks for being here again. And I guess the last thing, I would just issue a challenge to you. You know, you mentioned you have the purview as the elected sheriff, and I would just challenge you to use that purview to improve the communication with the immigrant community in Richfield and across Hennepin County. I think it is challenging. It's a fearful time, and would challenge you to be part of that solution.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Anything? Thanks again, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the time to have me out here tonight, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. Representative Garcia, nice to see you again. Thank you.
You're welcome anytime. Commissioner Gattell, it is good to see you. You're back in your stomping grounds. I'm hoping you have some words of wisdom for us yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for calling me up here. I do want to thank our sheriff. He has really been a passionate champion for the whole issue around opioids, and he's right. He can't do it alone, but neither can we. And so I'm really pleased to say that he is a good partner in this. But there are some pretty startling facts around opioids that he didn't share with you, and this is what I'd like to just cover tonight so you know about it, because it's affecting your community as well. One in four people who receive prescription opioids long-term for non-cancer pain in primary care settings struggle with addiction. 1,000 people treated in the emergency departments for misusing prescription opioids every day. What's also more astounding, when you heard the facts about the number of deaths, they are disproportionately affecting our younger folks, anywhere from the age of 15 to about 45. But it's not without its other people, you know, even children younger than this, and even some of our elderly are faced with these opioid addictions. One of the other facts that I'd like to share with you is I am the liaison to the Health and Human Services at the county. And recently, we have seen a huge uptick in children being pulled out of their families and put into foster care. And the largest reason is that right now is opioid addictions. So what's our primary prevention right now is monitoring and communication. So we're doing a lot around that. We're doing a lot of education. I think the biggest thing is trying to get the stigma reduction down. We want to manage the access so we can get more people into the treatments where they need. We need the safe storage and disposal, and we can thank our sheriff's department. I hope you keep those boxes coming. You just put a new one in, and the Brooklyn's up there. Thank you for doing that. Public safety interventions, which the sheriff already spoke about, the rescue and the harm reduction. Access to treatment and recovery services. I think what's really great about the Affordable Care Act is, as much as we have some issues with it, is that has allowed a lot more people to have access to that treatment that they need. And there needs to be some justice-involved supports around that. Some of our next steps at the county is we're actually going to assign a director-level person to carry out some of this strategy. We're gonna partner with some of the disproportionately impacted communities, that's people of diversity. We're gonna define naloxone response for the county facilities, because not only is it great that we have our public safety department carrying this around here in Richfield as well, is that we also need to have it, like, possibly at our libraries and other places. How could we train those people? How could we have it available to use for those times? We've actually had two incidences in our libraries here to date. So we'd like to know about provider-prescribed training for opioid guidelines. So we have, I have with me today just the executive summary and a few facts and everything, and I'll leave these over with the staff here to look at this. But I think it's a really big issue. I think it's an issue that's hit everywhere in the entire county, outside of our county. And I just wanted to rest assured that as big as it keeps growing, we're still really working hard together, and we've got a real good team working on it. So thank you for letting me come up tonight. It's nice to see you all here at the dais.
Thank you. You know you're always welcome.
Very good to see you.
And we still miss you.
I beg your pardon.
Well, I mean, we.
What's that supposed to mean?
Not necessarily sitting right here, but in my heart.
I'm sorry. Nerves a little close to the surface, that's all.
Well, I still miss the Minnesota house, too. Don't you, Rich? Absolutely.
Okay, once again, onward and upward to, not to belittle you, Sheriff, or Commissioner. On to hats off to hometown hits. Councilmember Troutman?
Yeah, thank you very much. Two Woodlake announcements. The continuing announcement, April 27th, is our annual Fowl, our Friends of Woodlake Dinner. It's the fundraiser every year, and something just to consider, if you can't make it to the Fowl Dinner, that a great way to honor a family member or honor a loved one is part of our tree endowment. So the Woodlake has a tree endowment, and anybody can purchase that. There are levels, all the way from $250 to $2,000. And so if you're looking for a way to honor a loved one and support the crown jewel of Richfield, our park here, and remember your loved ones, think about purchasing and participating in the endowment.
Thanks, sir. Councilmember Garcia?
Well, first, I wanted to mention the fact that you delivered your State of the City address earlier this week, last week, and we really appreciated it. I think, you know, your perspective was different. You know, I think there's a lot of things that come before us and that the public really doesn't know exactly, you know. It's kind of simplistic, you know. I mean, we get to vote on these, on the agenda, but there's so much that goes into, you know, the information and the staff work and just what we really have to digest in terms of before we come to a decision. And I think offering the public, letting them know exactly how we arrive at certain decisions, I think is very helpful. It helps in terms of communication and in terms of letting folks know that we appreciate their perspective, too, because oftentimes, we, you know, many of our ideas and many of the things that come before us, we get from the public, and we appreciate that. Unfortunately, you know, I usually have a long list of hometown hits, and you're not gonna -- well, I'm always prepared, so I did this Friday night. And naturally, I, you know, it just, I just forgot them. So when I mentioned that at our study session, that I forgot my hometown hits, all the council members stood up and clicked their heels. They were so happy. Because I usually, by the time I'm, you know, I'm done with them, they don't have much to say. So that's kind of my gift to you tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia.
Sometimes a little advance notice would work well, because then we could prepare. That's my fault. I just want to say in regards to the State of the City that it was an easy presentation to make, because there's so many positive things going on. And in terms of the staff, I think that from my perspective, you gotta give credit where credit is due, because the decision-making we have to do on policy issues, if we weren't presented with a wealth of information to clarify any issues we may have or answer any questions we have, we'd spend a lot more time pondering it, a lot more time debating it. It's presented in a way where no decision is automatic based on the presentation and the staff reports or anything, but it goes a long way towards making sure that we're moving in the right direction. And that's what I wanted to thank the staff for, is making our job so much easier. And this is kind of difficult. I think that Simon will appreciate this, and myself, and the other lawyers in the audience, but anytime you get a special verdict form that comes back, it's in your favor. It's, and I'm gonna, this is gonna sound a little strange, but when I get one like this, it's akin to the birth of a child. It is an elevating experience to go into a courtroom and have a jury decide that your client was right. But we got one this past week, and I think that I want to thank the city manager for his involvement, and he spent a lot of time down in the courtroom and a lot of time on the witness stand, which is not the most pleasant place to be. But, and, you know, it's not about what it was about or anything. It's just the fact that the city's position was ratified, and we got a -- and we got a decision that was appropriate in this particular case. So I want to thank our city attorney, the League of Minnesota Cities Attorney that represented us, and city manager for the efforts he put into his testimony. And moving on to Councilmember Howard.
I'd be remiss if I didn't also mention the mayor's State of the City. Just because it was, the thing that I appreciated the most is what's so clear that our mayor put a lot of time into that speech, and that it was grounded in how much he loved this city. And its history, where we've been, and how that informs where we're going to go. And that's the part of the speech that I really enjoyed the most, even more than the soundtrack, which was also fun as well. But I just want to thank you for not only giving that speech, but how much passion that showed through on it.
Thank you.
And then my one hats off that I wanted to mention is that nominations are open this year for the Richfield Human Rights Commission's Gene and Mary Jacobson Outstanding Citizen Award. Folks will remember, we do this every year around this time, and folks have until April 27th to submit a Richfield resident or an organization. I think last year, our Citizen of the Year was Frazier. But what this award is, is nominations for one of the most prestigious awards available in Richfield, the Gene and Mary Jacobson Outstanding Citizens Award. And this is an annual award that honors a family, group, organization, business, or individual that lives or works in Richfield. And the Human Rights Commission gives this award to recognize outstanding community service, a commitment to human rights, or efforts to improve our community and make it a better place for all. So we, our Human Rights Commission takes this role very seriously, and they're really encouraging folks to send in recommendations of either your neighbors or an organization that you've worked with. And we really appreciate when they come organically from residents. So please, think about over this last year and who in Richfield deserves this wonderful honor. You can submit the nomination in a number of ways. It's available on our city website. You can also contact Susie Call Me with the City of Richfield at 612-861-9876. And as I mentioned, you have until April 27th, so that's exactly a month. You have a month to ponder and think about this, but get submissions in, and it's something we really look forward to honoring folks when summer hits.
Thank you. Councilmember Regan Gonzalez?
If I would have known that Councilmember Garcia was unprepared, I would have taken this time to shine and bring a long list of events coming up. But I didn't, so next time, please tell us in advance.
Okay, I will.
But there is just a couple of things I wanted to reflect on. So last week, we had our goal-setting session and our strategic planning as a city council, and we spent the day, all of us, talking with our department heads, with the city manager, about the future of Richfield and what our goals are as leaders and as a community. And I've been a part of two of these now, and I just want to say, they are so inspiring and invigorating. We do get in the weeds about so many topics in the city. But what is true again this year is that Richfield is really set up to do some excellent work. We have so many things that are coming our way in terms of redevelopment, in terms of housing, in terms of sustainability issues, in terms of really leading with equity, being an innovator on multiple levels. And so it's just very exciting to be a part of that, it's an honor. And I would say it connected really nicely. We didn't just get here, you know, in the last year or for no reason. This is because of the long history of Richfield leaders, and I think the mayor did an excellent job of really explaining some of that history that our staff, that our city council members have taken over the years to make really hard decisions that maybe at the time were, in some cases, unpopular or the more difficult route. But those decisions were made to really set us up to where we are today. And I just feel very thankful to be a beneficiary of that, and our whole community really is going, is a beneficiary of that. Related to just partnerships and a thriving Richfield, I just want to mention two examples. So this morning, we met with our congressman, Congressman Ellison, and we had the opportunity to hear the things that he was working for at the national level. And we also had the opportunity to share about some of our concerns and areas of focus locally. And what really that highlighted for me is that we are doing a lot of similar things, making sure that we're doing everything we can at the local level, at the state level, and at the federal level to make sure our Richfield residents and Minnesota residents have the tools and resources they need to have a healthy, strong, thriving community. So a couple areas where we really coincided were the work that we're each doing around affordable housing and doing what we each can to address the housing crisis from renters to homeowners. Also, making sure that we're collaborating in any way possible. So there were some really great conversations around that. And then also the opioid crisis as well. We did talk about that and what the effects are that we are seeing locally and the work that's being done nationally. So I just kind of wanted to reflect and highlight the exciting future that we have ahead of us, and that is really a testament to the work that our leaders have done in the past years, and then sharing the great meeting we had this morning.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next item is seeking approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Number four, consent calendar, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. For those in the audience here and at home, the consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. And once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved and require no further action. We start with item A, consideration of the approval of a bid tabulation and a word of contract by Two Minutes Roadways Incorporated for the 2018 Mill and Overlay Project in the amount of $1,573,102, and authorize the city manager to approve contract changes under $100,000 without further city council consideration. Item B is consideration of the approval of a bid tabulation and a word of contract to McNamara Contracting Incorporated for the 2018 Concrete Sidewalk, curb, and gutter repair project in the amount of $811,507.25, and authorize the city manager to approve contract changes under $100,000 without further city council consideration. Item C is consideration of the approval of a resolution of support for the Metro Orange Line Bus Rapid Transit Station and Knox Avenue Transitway Design. Item D is consideration of the approval of issuance of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Blessed Trinity Catholic School located at the Assumption Catholic Church at 305 East 77th Street for their 2018 Fiesta Event taking place on April 28th, 2018. Item E is consideration of the approval of a resolution allowing acceptance of a grant for the fire department to purchase lifting safety equipment. Item F is consideration of the approval of the purchase of a station alerting system from U.S. Digital Designs in the amount of $114,500 for both Richfield fire stations. And finally, item G, consideration of the approval of a resolution appointing Brian Cuffell to the Richfield Tourism Promotion Board to complete a three-year term ending December 31st, 2018, or until a successor is chosen, whichever is later. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
Thank you, city manager. Move the approval of the consent calendar?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar is passed. Next item on the agenda is assigned to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott. This is a public hearing and consideration of the approval of a resolution for the preliminary plant of, quote, Nora Corner that will combine four parcels, 6529 and 6545 Penn Avenue, and 2208 and 2210 66th Street West, into three parcels in order to allow construction of a previously-approved restaurant, Dunkin' Donuts. The city council, we previously approved the plans to build the Dunkin' Donut Restaurant at 6529 Penn Avenue. That includes improvements to the adjacent property, 6545 Penn Avenue, on October 24th, 2017. The applicant owns four contiguous parcels and the northeast corner, 66th and Penn, and all of which are unplanted land. They're now proposing to plat and combine that land into three parcels, and these parcels would correspond to the Dunkin' Donuts at 6529 Penn Avenue, the Farmer Flowerama at 6545 Penn Avenue, and the Ida Restaurant at 2208 66th Street West. So the proposed plant of Nora Corner has been reviewed by the city attorney's office and by our Public Works and Hennepin County. And prior to the consideration of a final plant application, the applicant will be required to satisfactorily address all comments. But we don't anticipate any major issues. So with that, we'll conduct a public hearing. Is there anybody here who would care to comment on the resolution? Is there anybody? Ask one more time? All right, I would move that we would close the public comment.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public meeting is closed.
All right, then, I would move that we approve the resolution for a preliminary plant of, quote, Nora Corner, end quote, that will combine four parcels, 6529 and 6545 Penn Avenue, and 2208 and 2210 66th Street West, into three parcels in order to allow the construction of the previously-approved restaurant, Dunkin' Donuts.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution passed. If I may, Melissa, any idea of the timeline on beginning of construction or what the construction status is?
Sure, well, there is a representative of the developer here, but I can tell you that building permits have been applied for, and those are under review now. Generally, that takes, you know, four to six weeks to review plans, but perhaps...
I didn't want to single the representative, I thought it's easier to work through you. But would you mind coming up if you can give us any idea on where we're at in terms of having an early morning coffee place?
Yeah, I think what the mayor is asking is when, when can you get some donuts?
Any excuse to come say hello is fine. Hi, Carla Carlson, Penn Avenue Partners, is the owner and developer of the property. Melissa is right, we are in for the various building permit approvals. We expect to get our demolition permit prior to actual building permits, so demo could start as soon as three weeks, pending the weather that we've been fighting this spring. And we're ready to go. So as soon as we can get those building permits, we'll be underway, and we'll see some changes.
Thank you, and welcome to the neighborhood.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is assigned to Councilmember Regan Gonzalez.
The next item is a consideration of the approval of a resolution endorsing smoke-free multi-unit housing within the city of Richfield. The Richfield Advisory Board of Health has a long history of tobacco and prevention work with partners like Minnesotans for Smoke-Free Generation, Association of Nonsmokers in Minnesota, and Clearway Minnesota. In Richfield, tobacco efforts have included recognition of successful retail sales compliance and inclusion of electronic cigarettes in the city tobacco policy and stricter cigar sales. As an affordable housing, as affordable housing options increase in the city, this provides the opportunity, or opportune time for the city of Richfield to endorse a smoke-free multi-unit housing resolution that seeks to ensure the health, wellness, and safe living conditions for all Richfield residents. And I do just want to continue and read the historical context, because it is pretty helpful. The smoke-free housing movement has gained significant traction over the past decade from about fifty apartments statewide in 2007 to nearly 4,000 apartments throughout Minnesota today. Unfortunately, smoke-free policy coverage at affordable housing developments and common interest communities lag significantly behind their market rate and luxury rental counterparts, contributing to health inequities for low-income communities, seniors, and people of color. Community advocates, local public health, and the Richfield Advisory Board of Health believe that all Richfield residents, regardless of income, deserve a healthy, clean, and safe home environment. Currently, free resources and technical assistance are available to Richfield property owners and managers interested in adopting, expanding, or maintaining a smoke-free policy. Additional free resources are available to support residents who are interested in quitting smoking. I would like to make the motion to adopt a resolution endorsing smoke-free multi-unit housing within the city of Richfield.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution is passed.
And I just wanted to make a couple comments on this. So this is actually something that I hear quite a bit from constituents of mine. So we have a lot of students in our school district who do live in apartments, and I do get quite a bit of phone calls, and I experience it myself when I go to the apartments where there are smoke-free policies in place, but they may not be followed, and enforcement is very difficult. And I have families and parents who come to me and really asking what can be done. And so this is something that does directly impact our youth, does impact our families, and I definitely think is an important part of the work that we continue to do.
Actually, I had one other comment, too, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I just wanted to underscore something that Councilmember Regan Gonzalez mentioned from the historical context about how this helps reduce health inequities, just because we spent a lot of time at our work session talking about equity and how important that is. And there's a lot of things before us that might, on its face, not seem like it's helping us tackle inequity in our community, like, for example, you know, banning smoking in our multi-unit buildings. But it clearly is an equity issue. And so I just wanted to highlight that, and I think it's a good point where we can, throughout the year and moving forward, where we're reducing inequities and taking action, call that out.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just comment, contrary to any comments I've made in our work session, I really do support this, because it's not just about individuals, but it's about the community, and it's about giving people a safe space, which, especially in a multi-housing situation, it's really, it's really something that's positive for the community, so I'm glad to support it.
We're keeping a scorecard for you, Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next item on the agenda involves the consideration of the designation of a mayor pro tem for 2018. City Charter states it's necessary to designate a city council member to serve as the mayor pro tem for those times when the mayor is absent from the city. This item is typically approved at the first meeting in January, was inadvertently excluded from the agenda. City Councilmember Michael Howard has served as mayor pro tem for 2017. And after due consideration, at this time, I would nominate Councilmember Maria Reagan Gonzalez to serve as mayor pro tem in 2018. And I promised her I would try not to have too many trials out of town, so. But I think that moving it around and having members participate in the reserve role as mayor pro tem, when you have the opportunity to do it, it's not terribly different, but it gives you a different perspective, a different view on the city, and allows more time and interaction with staff and city managers in terms of going over the agenda and trying to set the issues. So it's a valuable learning experience, and I think moving in and out of the chair allows you to carry that perspective to your council seat, and it benefits you and it benefits the people around you, because you've just got that little bit different experience, it's always beneficial. So at this time, I would move to appoint or name a council member, Maria Reagan Gonzalez, as mayor pro tem for 2018.
And I would second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem.
All right.
Thank you, I, it is an honor to have this opportunity. And this is, I'm somebody who likes structure sometimes, so I think this is an area where I am going to like exploring kind of what that role is and working more with Steve, so, thank you.
Great. Claims and payroll. Whoops.
City manager.
Backtrack for a second, city manager's report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I really don't have a formal report tonight.
That's known as much ado about nothing. Claims and payroll.
Mr. Mayor, I will move claims and payroll.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.